Good evening. Good evening. This is the Milford Zoning Board of Appeals, July 2021. Let us start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
You can pick whichever one you like. All right, thank you. Ms. Ferrante, Ms. Fallicat, and Mr. Casey are all excused. Mr. Wolf?
Here.
Mr. Soda?
Here.
Mr. Dubois?
Here.
Mr. Hirsch?
Here.
And Chairman Tizola?
Here.
Okay. Well, welcome, everyone. This is our first time being back after sixteen months. So we're finally back into a regular meeting forum. So, all right. Also present this evening are Stephen Harris, our zoning officer, Meg Green, our recording secretary. And this evening, we're missing Ms. Ferrante. So, Mr. Dubois, you'll be voting for Ms. Ferrante. And we're missing Ms. Fallicat. So, Etan?
Okay.
Please, Mr. Hirsch. If anyone feels that there's a member on this board that might be a conflict of interest to your application, please let us know. Other than that, we can get started.
First item, One Seabreeze Avenue. Peter Massey, agent for PMDK Group applicant. Variance to Section 5.5.4.1 to allow a restaurant in a BD zone serving alcohol less than fifteen hundred feet from another restaurant serving alcohol. 5.5.1.2 to be within three hundred feet of a public park or place of worship or other public assembly.
Yes, come forward.
Just want to thank everybody for hearing our case again.
You have to identify yourself, sir.
My name, I'm sorry, my name is Peter Massey, of one of the members of PMDK Group. I'm the owner of the new Seabreeze, the former Seabreeze Pizza. So we're applying for a variance for being within fifteen hundred feet of Bonfire Grill and a synagogue. We are showing a dimensional hardship, meaning that the conditions present would otherwise be able, would otherwise be able to use our property the way we are proposing. Situated as it is, if we move in any direction to try to comply, we still fall within that regulation. We can't get far enough away from Bonfire or the synagogue within the BD-zoned area without this variance. The granting of this variance will not be detrimental to public welfare or to others or property or improvements in the neighborhood in which the property is located. The proposed variance will not impair an adequate supply of light and air to adjacent properties, substantially increase the hazard from fire or other damages to said property, or otherwise impair the public health, safety, comfort, morale, general welfare inhabitants of the town, city, diminish or impair property values within the neighborhood. That's all I got for you.
Okay. And I believe you did, you did a presentation once or twice before, and last month, we had to...
Correct.
Bring you, bring you back because there was, I guess, lack of one particular item on your application.
Correct.
Any questions for this gentleman? Okay, no questions? Is there anyone else speaking in favor of this application? Anyone else speaking in favor of this application? Is there anyone here opposed to this application? Any further questions? This hearing's closed. We'll have a decision for you shortly. Okay, your thoughts, please. We've, we've gotten some information. We've all been involved with this before. Mr. Soda?
Well, we've always approved these, so I don't, I don't see a problem. We've had a lot of these come before us, and we always give our okay on it.
Full compliance with the prior documents that were provided from last request. I don't have a problem with this.
Any other comments or thoughts? Mr. Hirsch?
Nobody's opposed to it, so...
We need a motion.
I make a motion to approve.
Second the motion? We have a motion to approve, and we have a second on the motion? Mr. Hirsch?
With the motion.
Mr. Soda?
With the motion.
Mr. Dubois?
With the motion.
Mr. Wolf?
With the motion.
I'm with the motion. It's approved. Okay, I'll fill you in a little bit on what we're talking about. These meetings are always recorded, and you could always watch them on YouTube. So I've been made, alerted that it's being recorded right now, but there's no volume with it. So we're trying to fix that problem, so just want...
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, the audio portion is being recorded. The video portion has technical problems right now.
Okay, thank you.
This is for the broadcast. I'm, I'm actually able to capture the audio here. But on the, there's a, there's a cable vision broadcast and a YouTube livestream, so just so you know.
All right, we'll proceed. Thank you for your patience. Go ahead, Stephen. Item two is forty-three Bay Shore Drive Extension. Robert Wortman, owner, to vary Section 4.1.4 to fourteen-seven, where sixteen feet is permitted for a front deck projection. Five-point-eight feet and six-point-eight feet, where an eight-foot is permitted for side projection for reconstruction and remodel of a single-family house. Mr. Wortman?
Hello, my name is Robert Wortman, and this is my wife, Amy. We're here because we are essentially doing a remodel or renovation of a house. We're using the exact same footprint for the house. And we are, the original house did not have a deck. We wish to have a deck. And apparently, the posts...
I'm sorry, can I interrupt you just a minute? Just pull that microphone closer to you, please.
Closer? Is that better?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Okay. So we're doing a remodel and renovation of forty-three Bay Shore Drive Extension. We're keeping the exact same footprint. The original house did not have a deck. We wish to have a deck coming off the second floor on the front and the side. And the posts that would hold the deck up are the question of the setback restriction.
Gentleman, are you following this? Do you understand what he had just said? Do you? Okay. Do you have anything else, sir? Are we all, you all set?
I'm all set, thank you.
All right, is there anyone else here speaking in favor of this application? Any questions for this gentleman? Is there anyone here opposed? Anyone here opposed to this application? Forty-three Bay Shore Extension. Anyone opposed? This hearing's closed. Again, your thoughts? Mr. Wolf?
No issue with the adjacent property. You're tight on that front corner. But his existing footprint, you have a non-conforming lot on the corner. I don't have a problem with the fourteen-six.
Same with me. It's an irregular piece of property, so it's not square or anything. And, you know, it's hard to get anything much in there.
I think, I think the big, I think the big thing, I think the big thing is the fact that there's, he's not changing the current footprint. So he's working within the confines that he already has.
Yeah, he's working with what's, what's there, and actually, if you look at the shape of the lot and how the house is placed on it. So, okay, we need a motion.
Good-looking unit.
I'll make, I'll make a motion.
Please.
A motion to approve. Second, based on the irregular shape of the lot.
We have a motion, and we have a second on the motion. Mr. Dubois? Mr. Dubois, with the motion. Mr. Wolf?
With the motion.
Mr. Soda?
With the motion.
Mr. Hirsch?
With the motion.
I'm with the motion. It's approved. Nice house. Good luck.
Thank you.
Item three, moving right along. Fifty-eight Lilac. Michael Sloot, agent for Jennifer Martino. Variance to Section 3.1.4.1. Western setback to six-point-two, where ten foots permitted for an accessory apartment. The easternly side setback to one-point-two, where ten foots required to construct a garage as shown on the survey dated five-nineteen twenty-twenty-one. Michael?
Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, Board. My name is Michael Sloot, parent for my daughter, Jennifer Martino. Everything you said is correct. I did go over this with the zoning officer, Steve, and he was not really sure about the one-point-two feet. After Richard Plain, the surveyor, had done the property there, I already had architectural plans drawn for a two-car garage on the right side, where that neighbor and five other neighbors I have signed, or just they signed documents showing exactly what I was doing. The setbacks that were outside the ten-foot mark, one being six-foot-two, where the apartment setup would be for my wife and I, and trying to keep everything as the property is there and in the neighborhood. Then what I, and then I talked, after listening to Steve talk and Meg, the secretary with the zoning planning, I decided after the fact, which PDF stuff was sent to Meg and Steve, and I know was, should have been sent to you, gentlemen, also. Regarding that, and what I did was I changed the garage now to a fifteen-foot garage instead of the nineteen-foot. So I'd, instead of being a one-foot-two, even though the neighbor right there had no problem with me having it so close to the line, I decided to, after listening to Steve, just give me just a little bit of his obvious, his opinion from all this stuff, I decided to back that up myself and to make it a one-car garage. And the garage is set back to the very back of the house, reason being, it's this way when, if it's a one-car garage, then this way, we're able to at least get two other cars in the driveway, because the hardship of that house is the narrowness of the width of the property. The depth is fine. It goes back another hundred-and-aught feet, so there's plenty of room in the back. So like I said, I do have a, signed by the neighbors across, next door, each side of my house, signing everything on here, stating that I advised them of the variance required from the plans from the city of Milford. And this would be brought home from the ten-foot setback to a one-two, one-foot-two-inch, which I wasn't sure was really going to fly. And then on the east side, and the six-foot-two on the west side for the apartment setup. And then I also had one letter from, to the Zoning Board of Appeals, to whom it concerned, Michael Shedlock and I, Erica Cruz, are the owners of forty-six Lilac Lane, Milford, Connecticut. Recently received a letter from our neighbors, Michael Sloot and Jennifer Sloot, my daughter's going back to her maiden name, who applied for a variance regarding a proposed renovation to their home at fifty-eight Lilac Lane. Mr. Sloot, Sloot showed us the plans for their renovation, and we believe that proposed design maintains the charm of the Cape style and complements the character of the neighborhood. In 2016, Michael and I applied for the grant of similar variance for our home renovation. We hope that Milford Zoning Board of Appeals will consider approving Mr. Sloot's renovation. And thank you in advance for your consideration. Sincerely, Michael Shedlock and Erica Cruz. If you'd like to see that, I can show you that stuff.
Yeah, you can bring it up forward. Okay, thank you. Mr. Harris, are there any, any change in the plans then? We have five-and-a-half feet, five-point-five on one side, and six-point-two, because we're showing one-and-a-half right now.
The applicant is proposing to reduce the width of the garage on the right-hand side from nineteen feet to fifteen feet.
Right.
So if, if the board, if the board is...
Do you have the paperwork that you need for that change?
The paperwork, no, it was, the revised plans arrived too late, because the advertisement had already gone out. But the applicant can volunteer to reduce his own variance request verbally, which is what he's doing. So he's asking for fifteen feet on the right side instead of nineteen feet, which is shown for the width of that garage. So if the board is predisposed to approve this, then you could throw that condition in.
All right, okay. Yes, we are. So that was my point, to make sure that you had all the correct information so that we can act on it. Any questions? Go ahead, Mr. Soda.
All right, you're putting a lot on this house, and the garage addition is only going to be a one-story addition?
Yes, sir.
Have you considered making that a two-story addition and moving that apartment towards the garage and adjoining it to the garage? And put a second floor across the whole back, so you can, you know, reduce some of these variances? There's a lot you can do here. And you got this addition just kind of spread out on both sides, and you're asking for variances on both sides, and I think you can make it a lot better.
Well, sir, the, the reason that being is that my daughter's house, the way it's set right now, it has a room, a, a room on the backside of that house. So you have the Cape, and it's got a, it blows back another twenty-and-aught feet. So what I was trying to do was take the garage, a one-car garage, because I'm thinking the two-car garage was not going to fly, because they're so close. Regardless, the neighbor was saying they had no problem with it and signing it. I just felt that, you know, after, you know, listening to Steve not tell me what's going to happen, just respectfully, just kind of guiding me a little bit maybe, I don't know, we'll say. I just felt pushing the garage back and having, the look of it's going to be the same, because we're going to keep the roofline totally the same, where the roofline from the Cape is going to be the same way on the front entrance of the garage. The same thing to the left side of the house, the apartment being built. And both of those are being pushed back. They're not going to be flush with the house.
So this, I don't have any elevations, so this is a Cape?
Yes, yes, sir.
So...
It's one-and-a-half story Cape.
So you got a gable on each end, and you just, the back is just a roof. You don't have any second-floor windows looking over the back? So you could very easily put this addition across the back and just extend the ridge, from the ridge right back down. I mean, it's an ideal situation. It would cost you a lot less, too.
I know that, just, you know, I got to live with my wife, and she wants her own separate place.
Yeah, but you could still have it. There's, you put up a wall. It's separated. Condos are separated by a wall?
You know, where...
I just think you're asking for a lot here, and you could really consolidate this, so you don't need as many variances. That's my opinion.
Go ahead, Mr. Wolf. Question. The accessory apartment, as faced from the exterior on the left side, is there any passage from the primary house?
No, the only pass, there'd be two passages. One is in the back, the slider. So, give you example, if, say we're, we had the one-car garage approved, there'd be two ways from the garage to get into the house. One is through the back door in the primary house. If you were going to go to the actual apartment in the back, you'd go out the back door of the garage, go around, and it'd be on the side and not the back, the side.
Sure.
Be entrance slider to go in. Or the other way was to go into the gar, for the garage, into that summer room I was talking about before, Mr. Soda, back over there. So you go through there, and then you have to walk into the house. There'd be an entrance, a double lock on there for now, that goes into that area, because I have two very small grandsons, and my wife and I are spending time...
Gotcha. So functionally, your accessory apartment is completely independent of the primary residence?
Well, it could be, yeah, it's, I have my own, you know...
So if you're locked up, if you go to Florida, you lock this place up, and you have, it's, it's, what I'm struggling with is you're parking a second house against this one, and if you guys leave it, or if it functionally works as a, as a two-family, because you don't, accessory apartments are typically conjoined, so...
This, this, this does join in.
Yeah, I see, I, I see it. Mr. So, Mr. Herr...
Mr. Chairman, accessory apartments have to be directly accessed from the main house.
Right.
That's, that would be a construction and a floor plan detail that he could work on.
So you do, so there is a functional entrance from the primary residence?
Absolutely.
Where is, where is that?
When you come, either way, if you come into the front entrance of the house, and you walk into the kitchen, you take a left, and instead of going up the stairs to the two small bedrooms, you walk straight across from the bathroom right here, and that goes right into...
Through an opening or a door?
It'll be a door.
Lockable door?
It'll be a locked door, unless the city says something different.
No, no, I got you. So it is conjoined to the property. Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Mr. Harris, there's no kind of zoning regulations on an accessory apartment in that area?
It's a single-family zone. You can have an accessory apartment in a single-family zone.
Any other questions? Anyone else speaking in favor of this application? Anyone here opposed to this application? Board members, any more questions? This hearing's closed. So right now, we're looking at a floor plan here that's not going to be what we're, we see. He's coming in three feet in addition to this one-point-two setback. So we're looking at a four-point-two from the, from the existing boundary.
For the garage. I'm sorry.
Mr. No, yeah, take, so, right here is the one-point-two. That's getting modified. He's gonna, he's gonna squeeze down that garage. So we're down, you're a five-point-two, five-point-two.
There's one-and-a-half foot over there.
Yep, right, right.
Which is going to be now five-and-a-half.
Yeah, right. So we're, okay, so we're...
So that, that's been taken away.
Reducing this, and then your six-point-two, I didn't have a problem with. But your comments originally with bumping out on both sides, it's, this, this is a tough one. This is a tough one.
The issue I have is, is essentially, he's essentially building a second house, is what's going on here.
Accessory apartments, you can make them big.
He's essentially building a second house. Let's, let's be honest. So I think if you're going to build a se, if you're going to build a second structure...
You can sit, sir. I close this hearing. We're just going to discuss it and vote on it. You can sit. You can sit.
Oh, okay.
Because I closed the hearing, and we're discussing, and we'll vote on it, and you'll know right now.
It's zoned for, this is a zone for single-family homes. Essentially, he's trying to create a two-family house.
But they are allowed in the zone.
Yeah, but if you're allowed, yeah, you're allowed in the zone, but I think if you're going to build a second accessory apartment, you have to be within the setbacks. I don't think you can have it both ways here.
If he's within the square foot, he's okay on the square foot.
There's a lot of room for improvement on this. We don't even have, we don't even have, we don't even have elevations of existing and proposed elevations. We need elevations to decide on this. So I think we either deny without prejudice, or we postpone it till he gives us elevations of the outside of what it's going to look like.
We're not going to postpone it, deny without prejudice.
Deny without prejudice, because I think it, I think there's a lot of rooms for improvement here.
Thank you.
He's got to consolidate these in closer to the, to the house. Okay, we need a motion. I make a motion to deny without prejudice.
I second the motion? We have a motion, and we have a second on the motion. Mr. Dubois?
I'm with the motion.
Mr. Wolf?
With the motion.
Okay. Mr. Soda?
With the motion.
Mr. Hirsch?
Against the motion to the extent we should deny...
Without prejudice.
No, just deny, period.
Okay.
So I'm against the motion to deny without prejudice.
All right, I'm with the motion. So it's denied, it's denied without prejudice. Sir, do you, do you need an explanation on denied without prejudice? It gives you the opportunity to reevaluate your plans, and you can, you know, there will be no additional charges to you and application fees. So we just feel that as, that the plans that you've submitted, that there are room, there is room for improvement.
And if you could also bring us elevations, an architectural drawing of what it's going to look like from all the sides.
Sent the PDF stuff to Meg. Didn't that have all the elevations on that? That stuff I got from my architect, I sent, sent, and then sent it to Steve. Had all the elevations. I just don't understand, you know...
We did get, we did get an extra set of submittals, but they were, that was after the, this Adam had already been advertised.
So what happens now? I have to live in the basement for another month to do all this again?
Why don't you, why don't you stop into the office tomorrow morning, and I can, I can walk you through it?
You'll, you'll hold on to those papers I gave you? Thank you very much.
Okay, item number five.
I don't know, I don't, I don't know if he got that part.
We'll see. You know, he gets it.
Okay.
Number five. Governors.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
No, this is a big one. Num, item number four is thirty-four governors of. Mary Ann Paisley, owner, variance to Section 3.1.4.1. East setback to two-point-seven and three-point-one, where ten feet is required. West setback to eight-seven, where ten's required. Building coverage of thirty-eight-point-one percent, where thirty is permitted. Variance to Section 4.1.4, east deck projection to three-point-one and three-point-three, where eight feet is permitted. And section variance six-point-three-point-two, expand non-conforming structure. All to construct a twenty-three-point-six-seven-feet-by-twenty-three-point-two-foot two-story addition and fourteen-foot-by-twenty-three-foot rear deck. Mary Ann?
No. How are you? I'm Patsy DePalmer. I'm representing my client. Okay? I'm Patsy DePalmer. I'm Patsy DePalmer, building and remodeling.
Name?
Name?
It's Patsy DePalmer.
You got it?
It's, uh, it's on the documents, thanks.
Yeah.
And we need your address, we need your address, sir.
My address?
Yes.
Uh, 901 Baldwin Road, Woodbridge, Connecticut. My client, you need my client's address? I don't want to speak too loudly. How's that? That's much better? Well, I'm here to represent my client for their.
It's a live mic that's set, preset all the time. I think we're just used to the zoom acoustics.
Just try and talk into that as best you can because?
I'm trying to do the best I can. You probably do, you could probably hear me.
No, that's not gonna work.
I'm here to, I'm here to represent my client's hardship issue. Okay? Uh, the narrowness of the lot. Uh, my client's name is Mary Ann and James Presley, who requests a variance to, uh, to preserve the right to develop their lot. The lot size at Governors, it, uh, the lot is located at 34 Governors Ave, 35 width, 175 length. It is very unique. The lot only, the lot shape, it is the only, I think, lot in the neighborhood of this size or its shape. The two-bedroom, one bath, it's a 1,066 square feet home, was built in 1910 prior to any of the regulations that it has to meet today's standards. And it cannot meet the setback area requirements of the current regulations. The variance would not be detrimental to the adjacent properties in the neighborhood. It would only, in my opinion, improve. Uh, there's a few other homes in the neighborhood, as I got written there, that are, uh, kind of of the same stature and size. 30 Governors Lane is a three-story, single-family home. It's about 2,452 square feet of living space, four bedrooms, two and a half baths, with a lot size of 48, uh, width and 173 in length. Uh, 38 Governors Ave is a three-story family home with 3,161 square feet and, uh, six bedrooms, one full and two, or one half and two full baths. And that lot size is 65 width, or 65 in width and 285 in length. I've been building in, uh, New Haven and Fairfield Counties for 40 years. I understand the unique shape and narrowness of this lot. In my professional opinion, I don't think it's, I don't think it's unreasonable, a request, that, uh, what my client's looking for, and I'm here to answer any questions that the board may have.
Go ahead, Mr. Soto. Okay, what is the footprint of the house? What is the square footage of just the first floor of the house?
Uh, I'm not, I'm not sure, I don't have the plan in front of me. It should be labeled on the plan, the total structure is 1,066.
What's that? What's the footprint?
550 square feet is the first floor, I see.
We need, we need you to identify yourself.
My name is Mary.
Please take off your mask because we're having trouble, if you can, unless you need it for health reasons, leave it on.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Um, do I state my name? Hi, I'm Mary Ann Paisley and I'm the homeowner. Um, the current house on the first floor is about 550 square feet. You can see that from the plans that we submitted.
Okay, so, and what's the size of the addition? Square footage just of the first floor?
On the first floor, the square footage is gonna be a little over 500 square feet.
So you got about 1,050?
Yeah.
Okay. Steven, can't, isn't the garage supposed to be 50% of the footprint of the house? Not to exceed 50%?
The department is having internal discussions as to the meaning of that definition.
I didn't hear you.
The department is having internal discussions as to the meaning of that definition.
What did he say?
So if you have a 2,000 square foot?
What did he say? He's giving you an opinion.
Okay, Mr. Soto didn't hear your answer, Steven.
Okay. The department is having internal discussions as to the meaning of that definition.
But I thought it was in the zoning rigs that?
It's actually found in the definitions, not, it's not in the regulations, it's a definition.
Because every garage I ever built could not exceed 50% of the footprint of the house. That's, that's been going on for 30 years, 40 years. He's got a, he's got a 18 by 48, almost 900 square foot, square foot garage here.
Is it 50% of the full house, so the 2,000 square feet?
50%, garage, from what I understand, garage cannot exceed 50% of the footprint of the house, just for this reason, so you don't put a big, huge, commercial garage in there, you know what I mean?
Right, is it of the current house or the house as modified?
With the addition, so if you have 1,050, technically, your garage has to be under 525 square feet.
Mr. Chairman?
Are you clear?
Hold on, hold on, yes, Mr. Harris?
Mr. Chairman, the size of the garage is not an issue in this application.
But it's a new garage and don't they, then they would need a variance for it?
Well, I was told that because the house is gonna be 2,050 square feet in size, we meet the requirement of the 50%.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just clarify everything going on with the garage. Um, one of the variances asked for is building coverage. So the applicant is proposing an addition, plus a deck, plus a garage, therefore, they've exceeded the building coverage. So in that respect, the garage is part, is, uh, comes into play. It doesn't come into play as to its setbacks from the, from the lot lines, though.
So what you're saying is if we approve, if we're approving these variances, then of course, the garage would be okay?
Uh, yes, if you, if you approve this application as is, then what you see on this piece of paper in front of you will get built.
Okay, so let's just get, let's just get back to the, uh, the building structure here, okay? Mr. Soto? Let's just get back to the, the variances that they're asking for on this house and we'll see what we take it from there. All right, any other questions right now?
Go ahead. The 1.2 setback that you're looking at, the adjacent property, do you know the setback or current non-conforming to the house next to it? Because you're down to 1.2 on a border, which is tough. If the adjacent property's also non-conforming, do you know that distance? Or do we have that? The 1.2, so if I go to? Let's see, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, it's actually 2.7. It's 2.7 in the front end, looks like 3.1 in the back.
And 3.1.
Easterly, yes.
Um, yeah, their lot is, their house is?
We, we can't hear you, we can't hear you, you have to talk into the microphone.
Their house is on a conforming lot.
Okay. Do we, do we have that anywhere? We don't. I'm just trying to see the relation to the existing non-conformity and what you're trying to park right up to your border. In the event of a, the? Right, I, yeah, off of this, right, this is, this is the one?
Yeah.
In the event of a fire, emergency, rescue situation?
About, um, I tried to measure it, but I didn't want to step on the neighbor's property, but an estimate, it's about, what'd you say, about 20 feet from our house to the, to their house. There's a driveway, so there's a bit of yard, and then there's their driveway.
A full driveway, so cars are?
A full driveway, yes, full driveway.
You're, you're?
So it's like my little bit of land, then they have about six feet of land, and they have about an eight to 10-foot driveway, whatever the driveway standards are.
Thank you. You're, so what, you're counting their area as the space between the house, is that correct?
If that's what the gentleman was asking, yes.
Yeah, so we're looking at your unit on how close you're coming to the property line, not the space that would be left over on, you know?
Well, I have a non-conforming lot, I'm right practically on the property line.
We can't borrow from the neighbor's side.
My house was built?
Okay, so let me ask you one other thing then. What is your, what is your hardship? What is your true hardship on this? Because this is a non-conforming structure, and you're asking for more non-conformity to the entire property. We need a hardship.
Right, our hardship is, because of the narrowness of the lot, I can't, what we do, there's no other way for us to actually add on to the house to make it more livable. We're living in a 1,066 square foot house with two bedrooms and one bath. We're looking to add a third bedroom, because we have two children, a kitchen and a second bathroom.
But you realized, even when you bought the property, it's a small, non-conforming lot. So, you know, you have a lot of variances here for us to consider, and that, you know, that's why we're asking for the hardship. You're building a bigger house on a piece of property that, that can't really take that. So, that's my opinion.
That's your opinion?
Yes, it is my opinion, sir.
One more, please? Go ahead. Etan? So the, let's go to the garage now. You got a gravel driveway, if, the intent is to drive past the structure into the garage?
Correct.
So you're gonna drive around that corner at 8.5 feet? Do we have a perimeter fence or anything between you and the adjacent property owner at this point?
Yes.
You do?
There is a fence.
So you're gonna tuck a car in between that 8.5 corner and then drive straight into a garage?
Well, yeah, the, the garage is gonna be straight through to the driveway, we can't have it curved because of the way that the house is going to be, so that's why the garage, we're hoping to park two cars in there, but they're gonna have to be stacked, so this way we don't have to put, can leave some grass, so the whole thing doesn't have to be paved, so we're gonna just go straight in.
So we're gonna park this garage at 4.1 feet from your boundary? You're gonna drive into an 18-foot wide, one bay or two garage doors, and then park two cars?
We're hoping one.
Nose to butt?
Yeah, we're gonna stack the cars.
With 48 feet of garage space?
And for storage, for a tractor, snowblower, boating, yeah.
Okay, no further questions?
Actually, Chris, with that 18-foot garage, they could throw a 16-foot door on and get four cars in it.
And put a, a apartment above it?
A car is six feet wide, you can only fit two cars.
What, wide, next to each other?
Inside the garage?
It's an 18-foot wide garage, you could put a 16-foot overhead door in, which is normally put in on a double, double garage.
Okay.
And you could put two cars in there.
Two cars, not, I think you said four cars?
Four, two and two, stacked two and two.
You could do that, yes, yes.
Okay, is there anyone else here speaking in favor of this application? Anyone else in favor? Do you have anything else that you want to add right now?
No.
You have the opportunity, if there's anyone opposed, to, to rebut any, any comments that are made, so. Is there anyone here opposed to this application? Please come forward, sir. Please state your name, your address, and your comments, please.
Uh, name's Tim Triano, this is my wife, Sarah Triano. Uh, we submitted, um?
Sir, can you get, get a bit closer?
A little bit better. Uh, Tim Triano, Sarah Triano, we're the owners of 38 Governors Avenue. The property immediately abutting 34 Governors Avenue on the east side where the two-foot variance is requested. Good to go. So, I submitted a letter outlining why, based on the settled legal precedent in the area, we don't believe that the lot's narrowness constitutes a valid hardship for an addition. Um, for everyone's benefit, I won't recite the, the literature that I provided, but ultimately denying the variances would not deprive the Paisleys of the property's value, as there's an existing structure on the lot. Further, I went back through the ZBA board minutes for the past three years and did not find any similar precedent, uh, variance granted in our surrounding neighborhood area, specifically the Hitching Post Governors Historic District, 12.5. Ultimately, we believe that the request of home additions will significantly diminish our property value, undermine the historic nature and charm of our downtown Milford neighborhood, and impact my family's ability to feel like we have privacy in our home. Uh, my wife was born and raised in Milford, Connecticut. Uh, we recently purchased on Governors last year, put our savings into, to buying and renovating our home, the interior of our home, and, uh, we specifically avoided the shoreline area, the R5 district, because we didn't want homes that were set on top of each other. Once the Paisley's plans were shared, I consulted with our real estate agent, Colleen Zacharelli. Uh, she's born and raised in Milford, been a Realtor for 29 years in, in Milford, so knows the market well. And her opinion is if the variance in the building is approved, it would devalue our home potentially significantly because of the close proximity. Um, you, you know, we sympathize with the Paisleys in this instance and their desire to expand the square footage, and we've had conversations with them about whether there's a more modest, um, addition that they could take here and not extend 24 feet, simply two feet away from our, our, our property line. Mr. Paisley did mention that it is feasible for him to build upwards. Right now, the, the building's two stories, they could go three stories, which i- is consistent with both our property at 38, as well as the property at, at 30 Governors Avenue. For additional background, Adam Cormier, who, who's sitting behind me, who owns 30 Governors Avenue, uh, completely renovated his property over the past few years, and he did so without obtaining any variances on the existing property footing. So ultimately, we feel strongly that a similar approach should be taken in, in this instance, where they stay true to the existing foundation on a non-conforming lot. Um, lastly, we, we want to be good neighbors here and, and, and work with the Paisleys to improve their home without compromising our own equity and our own privacy. And as Mr. Paisley stated, that expansion is possible, simply going upwards. We feel that that would be the, the appropriate compromise to, you know, everyone's stated goals. And, and I guess this is actually, lastly, the, the signatures that we submitted are, are simply for the abutting properties. We've since been approached by, uh, neighbors that do not have ex, uh, abutting properties to this and asked if, if they could sign the petition as well, if that would be helpful for the board. We could amend that and, and resubmit, if that would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have anything to say, ma'am?
No.
No, okay.
Good.
Any, anyone else speaking in opposition? Anyone else speaking in opposition? I'll give you a minute, just, if you want to come up and speak in opposition, otherwise, we're gonna call.
I'm a neighbor, I'm a neighbor, um, sorry, I'm short. Hi, I'm, I'm from 87 North Street, um, uh, my property, I'm actually 89 North Street as well, so my property?
Can, can you state your name, please, ma'am?
Sure, my name is Lalia Perna, 87 North Street, and, um, uh, I know their property, the Paisley's property. It's extremely narrow, I don't know how something like this could get approved, I really don't. And I, I feel terrible for the neighbors that, you know, just recently bought the house. Young couple, very excited, doing so much work to their property. I see them there every day, just working hard and, and trying their best and to, you know, have someone push their way to try to get a variance for two feet. I mean, imagine if you were just, you know, you just moved into the neighborhood, you're so excited to live in this historic, you know, district, and somebody wanting to be so close to you during COVID times. You know, people want their space, they want their distance. They want a big, you know, bigger property, they don't want to be so close to their neighbors, so. I just came here to support my neighbors, because, um, I did see, you know, I did get that in the mail and I couldn't believe how close they want to build, and I'm totally opposed, okay? I, I, I'm sure every one of you would be upset with someone wanting to build a huge garage, probably just the size of their house. I, I don't know how something like that could get approved, and I hope that you don't, okay? Just wanted to speak my mind. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank, thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else here speaking in opposition? Okay, the gentleman who did this presentation, you want to come forward?
He, he wants to come.
Is there, okay.
Wait.
Hold on, you speaking in opposition, sir? Are you opposed, sir? Are you opposed? Okay, please come forward.
Sorry about that, how you doing? I'm Adam Cormier, I live at 30. So the one thing I'm opposed about is, there's a conflict in, um, the variances, uh, excuse me, not the variances, the, um, surveys. There's a little conflict that everyone's having, so we're not sure whose property line is perfect, and obviously, property lines aren't perfect, but there's been a big problem with, um, our line, the people behind them, so that's what I'm opposing, is we basically, I would like to see some solid answers, and I, I did a lot of additions on my house. I stayed on the same footprint, so I agree with Sarah and Tim, it's coming down that close, because I could have, you know, went for variance. Because I could have, you know, went for variances and did all that, but I just stayed on the footprint, went up. So, I could have made the house a little bigger, changed plans, did things, I just stayed on my footprint. So, I stayed in all the guidelines, did my addition, you know, built my house. And that's why I feel he should, they should do the same, kind of stay in the conformity of the neighborhood. So, that's how I feel.
What number, Governors Avenue?
I'm thirty.
Thirty? So, you're right next door?
I'm right next door, yes, I'm to the left.
Thank you for your comments. Are you looking at a survey or are you looking at a pin that you might think that there's a discrepancy or?
Yeah, there's some discrepancies on the pins and stuff, yes.
Give me a ballpark, foot?
Five inches in the front line, fourteen inches in the back, two feet in the very back.
And you did your own when you were doing it?
I, Lalia and Rick, they did their survey. James did his. Flanagan came back, which is Lalia's guy, did our line between my property and James's.
Okay.
And ours matches up, everything the same, it's completely conflicting with James's.
So, you got a pin that's, and is this the back corner where this garage is?
Correct, yes. So, the pin is showing like fourteen inch difference and then two foot difference. So, that changes lot sizes, that changes, that changes so much.
Are they marked still currently?
They're still marked, yes.
Thank you.
Yes, no problem.
Mr. Chairman. Go ahead, Mr. Harris. The board lacks the authority to decide the validity or the accuracy of a survey. Just want to remind the board of that.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else speaking in opposition? Anyone else opposed? Okay, the presenter may come forward and rebut these comments.
Do I have to state my name again or no?
Go ahead, you've, you've listened to, you know, the, the opposition. Please address any, anything that you think that they wouldn't be clear on or something that would change their minds or?
Well, I just want to say that we bought the house in two thousand nine and have lived there for the past twelve years. We're very vested into our home and into our neighborhood. The footprint of our house is extremely small. And the option to go up on a design standpoint, even though that's what seems to be favored, really wouldn't be as agreeable to the style of the homes in the neighborhood. We would have almost like a San Francisco style townhouse, that would be straight up like a box. When we talked to our architect and our designer, because of the different styles of homes on our street, they decided that, or thought that a more colonial type style home with the two story addition in the back would be more in line with the other styles of the homes in the neighborhood. The home on thirty Governors Avenue is literally on top of our driveway. We did have our A two survey done by James Dennison in two thousand and nineteen, pinned and filed with the city. And then obviously, resubmitted once we had the design plans from the architect. If there is a dispute in the back, our attorney told us the best option for that would be to go four feet off of the disputed pin, which doesn't address the area of the lot size, the percentage use, but we're willing to compromise with that by removing the deck. And to your response of me knowing when we bought the house that we wouldn't, we had all of these different variances, I have to say that we were naive to that. We thought if we stayed within the lines of the existing foundation, we could add on some extra space. So, that was our mistake at that time.
And I want, I want you to understand, we don't try and make anything difficult for anybody. We're, you know, within reason, variances are given, so.
We think we have a really legitimate hardship. The house is built in nineteen ten on a nonconforming lot at that time.
That was approved by the town.
That was approved by the town and.
You know, to answer the narrowness of the lot.
Okay, any other questions for this, for this lady? Any other questions? No? Nope. Mr. Sota, you all set? Did you talk to your architect about moving the addition in like two feet on each side of the house? It would still give you a fairly decent sized house. Because even your main house now has that little jog on the right side, you see it, about halfway back?
Okay, so.
So, if you kicked it in maybe two feet, that's a compromise that would everybody would be happy with? I can't hear you.
It's what they came up with, the architect came up with that design, thought it looked best, the jogging.
I, I understand what the architect says, but, you know, you gotta work with what?
I don't, I mean.
What you have here, you know?
I know, we thought the only thing that we thought on the coverage would have been the.
Additions are stepped in a lot, a lot of times. You're a builder, you know that.
Yes.
I'd rather, I'd rather build an addition stepped in than, than try to, you know, especially if the old house is out of square or something.
So, are you suggesting that we step in on the one side that's already stepped in and keep that line going?
Well.
Or a little bit on each side?
Looking at your survey here, the existing two story residence, looks like there's about a one foot jog in it, according to the survey here, halfway down.
Because of the cantilever and the dining room, okay.
Yeah, so, I mean, if you brought the addition in eighteen inches on each side, you know, you're only losing three feet. And it would give you more room to get to the garage in the back. Now, you'd have ten, you know, ten, almost ten feet, they're over ten feet.
That's a good idea, actually.
I mean, it's, it, it's something that I guess they, the client will consider, I just don't know.
Sir, we're losing all your comments.
It's something they will consider. If that was, if they were to say that they would pull it in two feet and go through the expense of redesigning it, will it be approved tonight? That's probably more of the question.
Yeah, how does that?
How does that, I mean, you know?
I'm just giving you suggestions, you know what I mean? We could deny it without prejudice, which means you can redesign it and come back next month.
Yeah, but that also could be denied for the same reasons, though, right?
I mean, it doesn't take much to change a number on a plan, you don't have to redesign the whole plan. You just, if it's forty feet, you're making it thirty-eight or thirty-six, you know what I mean?
Yeah, number, well, numbers cost numbers, too, the architect will charge.
I have a question, what would that make us off the property line then? What would that bring us in off of the existing property line on that particular piece? Because, you know, the lot's crooked, so it expands as it goes back.
It depends on what you decide to jog it in. I mean, you've got opposition, your neighbors are opposed, so, I mean, I'm just offering a compromise and, you know, maybe everybody would be happy.
You have to take it in consignment, take it under consideration.
And the house that's on thirty Governors Avenue is right on top of our driveway. It's, so I don't know if they want us to go up, then we'll have two houses that are like, looking like New York City if I go up to the third floor. So, we thought that this design was, again, was the, the most stylistic.
But if you get turned down, you have no design.
True.
Well, either way, we gotta come back.
Yes, we have to come back.
We all set? Thank, thank you for your.
Thank you.
Trying to get people to compromise, it's compromise or denied. So, all right, so this hearing's closed. Okay, your comments, deny without prejudice?
I think we deny it without prejudice. And I also want to find out about this garage issue because I've been building garages for thirty, forty years, saying the fifty percent of the floor plan, and now Stephen says, I don't know.
Attached or nonattached, though?
Detached.
Detached?
Detached.
That's, I think they're gonna have a bigger problem with this detached garage.
Detached garage can't exceed fifty percent of the footprint of the house.
That's what they're, I think.
That's a forty, eighteen by forty-eight garage.
All right, we need a motion. Who wants to make a motion?
I make a motion to deny without prejudice.
I second the motion.
We have a motion, we have a second on the motion. Mr. Hirsch?
Against the motion, I would just deny outright.
Mr. Sota?
With the motion.
Mr. DuBois?
I'm with the motion.
Mr. Wolf?
With the motion.
I'm with the motion, tonight without prejudice.
Item five, number six Bedford Avenue. Joseph Cubic, attorney for Michael Castulli, I apologize for the pronunciation. Variance to section four point one point four, front porch projection to twenty-two feet where twenty-six is required. Joseph?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Joe Cubic and I'm a lawyer with Harlow Adams and Friedman here in Milford. And Attorney Hirsch, maybe I could pass you some documents that you could distribute so I don't have to go in front of everybody? I represent Michelle Castellucci and Mark Castellucci, who are here, present. And they are applying for variances for their new house at six Bedford in, in Milford. They're relocating back to Milford, in the Milford area. They're seeking a variance to construct a seven foot wide by twenty-eight foot long open covered porch with one step down further into the front yard setback for six Bedford. They intend to use this house as their primary residence when the construction is completed. Currently, it's under substantial remodeling and if you've driven by within the last week or so, you would have seen that. Roland, Mr. Roland Skinner, Michelle's father is a local builder and he is actually doing the, the reconstruction and remodeling. And the plan is to put a second story onto the house and push out the back of the house about four feet, probably about, I'm gonna say about a hundred square foot additional in the back. No variances are required for that work. In fact, it's already been permitted or, and it's under construction. But a variance is required for the front porch proposed. The original front yard wall will remain the same, that, that, that footprint will, will for the front of the house. All the additional activity will be at the back or up, going up a bit. Michelle and, and her father, and I believe Mark as well, have already spoken with a number of the neighbors, I think about ten households, and they've received all positive responses as to this front porch. The special circumstances affecting this property is it's a corner lot, therefore, two front yards, two rear yards, and the front of the house is right on that thirty, thirty foot line. I got a picture of the house, well, this house was built in nineteen fifty-five. And you can see the very last photograph in the, that small package I delivered to you is what is, what the house looked like before Roland Skinner got to work on it. And it's that classic nineteen fifties ranch, built in nineteen fifty-five. What we're seeking is, seeking front yard, going into the front yard where twenty-six foot would be allowed, reducing it down to twenty-two feet. But really, for the front porch itself, we're only asking for an additional three feet. And that's three foot times twenty-eight feet, which is eighty-four square feet into that front yard setback. And that one, additional one foot is the step down, single step down. And, and we contend that the eighty-four square feet is, it's only point seven percent, I'm sorry, yeah, points, less than one percent, point seven percent of the entire footprint of the property. With that step down, six foot wide, five foot wide being an additional five or six feet square footage. What's interesting, and there's a photograph of a front stoop, and you're, you're wondering, why is that front stoop in, in these photographs? Well, that's the front stoop that was put there in nineteen fifty-five. And it's actually, I put a tape on it today, it's sixty-three inches away from protruding out from the house, which is more than four feet. It's actually five feet and three inches. So, this front porch for sixty or seventy years has encroached into that setback. And there apparently hasn't been any real issues. I did include a photocopy of the, the antique stow house, which is literally across my, my client's property on Gulf Street. It was built in seventeen ninety, it's a beauty, but it's got that classic front porch, sit-down, sit-down front porch look. And we contend that our front porch, that Mr. Skinner will be building for Michelle and Mark, is in harmony with the neighborhood. There's gonna be no views or vistas disturbed, it'll be that classic, sit under, sit on the rocking chair on the front porch in front of the house. We do believe that the variance, variances sought will be in harmony with, in intent to the Milford regulations and they will not have an injurious impact to the neighborhood. Of note is that the very first document into that package is the, the zoning map. And I do know that this really has no bearing on hardship, but, you know, this property is bounded on two sides by properties in an R seven five zone, whereas the six Bedford is in a twelve point five zone. So, again, the impacts on the neighborhood are gonna be minimal at, minimal, if, if not, if, if nothing at all, certainly. And I guess just to wrap it up, the strict applications of the zoning regs will deprive the Castellucchi's of a reasonable use of their land. The granting of the variance is necessary for a reason, for the reasonable use. And the variance is a minimal, the minimal variance to accomplish this task that we think will be a great improvement to the property. I did include a drawing of the proposed front of the house. And the, the design is to show that the, the lines of the property kind of match up and kind of distribute the, well, it's a visual effect that we think improves that look on the property as well. And I don't think my clients need to add anything unless you, you know, they're here for questions that the board has them for them.
Okay, we have any questions? No? No?
One, one question, please. We've got a picture of the existing property.
Yes.
No, that's, that's house across the street.
This is, this is still?
No, it's under construction now.
That's on Gulf Street, he's just showing you, he's just showing you the porch.
All right, so the front elevation that we have drawn here, is this Gulf Street?
No, no, that's Bedford.
This is Bedford?
Yeah.
Okay, so you're not cutting an apron in off of Gulf, this is existing Bedford, front Bedford.
Right, it's just going up on the front.
No questions, thank you.
Thank you.
No question. Anyone else speaking in favor? Is there anyone else speaking in favor? Is there anyone here opposed? Any opposition to this application? This hearing's closed. Looks fine, go ahead, Mr. Wolf.
I have no problem with it.
Mr. Hirsch, go ahead.
I have no problem with it, it's in harmony with the neighborhood and it's, I don't see them doing anything with the footprint, so.
It's an improvement to the property.
That, too.
Okay, we need a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have motion to approve, we have a second on the motion, Mr. Hirsch?
With the motion.
Mr. Sota?
With the motion.
Mr. Wolf?
With the motion.
Mr. DuBois?
With the motion.
I'm with the motion, it's approved.
Item number six, twenty-three Raycroft. Mr. Lynch, for Mr. Fields, variance to section three one four one, easterly setback to five feet where ten feet's required for a single family residence. Mr. Lynch?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and hopefully, I'm speaking loud enough. Ms. Green will let me know if I'm not. And I have to say, it's actually refreshing to be, to be back in this room and, at, at the microphone rather than sitting in my office in front of that lousy computer. So, to begin with, I'm representing Buddy Field, who's sitting here with me tonight. Buddy purchased this property through a foreclosure some two months ago. We are presenting an application to you for a variance of one of the side yards, the southerly side yard of the property at twenty-three Raycroft, to construct a new residence on site. And I have some handouts that I wanted to give to you. So, if I can step forward and do that? Okay, so as I mentioned, Buddy bought this property some two months ago. It's located in what's commonly referred to as Noggetuck Gardens off of West Avenue, the side streets off of West Avenue, heading up the hill towards Noggetuck Avenue. And this is a nonconforming forty-five by one hundred square foot lot in the R twelve five zone. So, just doing a title search, the Noggetuck Gardens, you look at the deed for this property, the, the original subdivision map was back in nineteen twenty-two. And since then, what creates the hardship here is that the zoning regulations have been upgraded, actually twice over the last sixty years, seventy years, so that now. the last 60 years, 70 years, so that now this portion of Raycroft is actually in the R12.5 zone. I've handed to you, as part of my handout, and I'm gonna be referencing properties at 27 Raycroft and 23 Raycroft, I, sorry, 27 Raycroft and number 17 Raycroft. These were both 60 by 40, by 95-foot lots, in, one of them in the R12 zone and one of them in the R10 zone. So this property at 23 Raycroft actually straddles the zone line and necessitates a variance as being in the R12.5 zone versus the R10 to build a reasonably-sized house. The plan submitted to you show a 30 by 37-foot colonial with a deck in the back, and you've seen this picture before, we've submitted it to you on other applications where we've made the argument to you that on non-conforming lots such as this, we're showing you a picture of the house that can be built as of right and the requested house. And I think, again, this picture speaks a thousand words, and there's a number of neighbors that I think are here tonight that are gonna come forward and speak about how they really don't want to see a three-story tall skinny house in their neighborhood. They would like to see a more aesthetically pleasing house that conforms with the other houses in the neighborhood, specifically referencing the two that are just to the north of my client's property. Those are raised ranches, Buddy's proposed house is gonna be a 2,400-square-foot colonial with a one-car garage and the deck in the back, as I said. So, again, the, the legal hardship, it's stretching it a bit, but it's, it's there. This is a non-conforming lot. We want to build a house that conforms with the other houses in the area. There's been an upgrade of the zoning over, as I said, the past 60 or 70 years, that creates a situation where the current setback requirement is out of character with what was developed there when the houses were first built. The house that was on this property was torn down by the mortgage company that foreclosed on it, so I don't have a picture to show you, but it's my understanding that the setbacks are similar to the requested setbacks here. It's almost like we're coming forward with you on a beach property and saying that there's grandfathered setbacks from a prior house, and we want to build within the, the same footprint of, of that house. So that's the gist of our argument. I have an original petition in support of this application. I made a copy of it to hand out to you in the packet, but Meg, if I can give you the original, I'd like to have that made part of the record? And I believe that concludes my comments, and if there's any questions, either Buddy or I can answer them for you.
Yeah, Mr. Lynch, one of your last comments you made, the, the previous house...
Yes.
Do you think the setbacks were the same?
Yes.
The footprint was the same?
I believe...
It was five and five?
Substantially the same, Joe. If you look at vision appraisal, there's a picture of the existing house, and just from looking at it, it appears as though the setbacks were very similar.
I think, I just want a clarification on that. Go ahead, Mr. Sodha.
Attorney Lynch, I think we did this on one of your other houses, but does your client have any opposition to, if we approve this, to put a height restriction to, to two stories? Because once you get the variance, and he sells the house...
You're right. I, the, the, the street that's right off of, down at Walnut Beach there, I remember the application, I can't remember the address. No, he has no, no problem.
So we'll just put a restriction for that, okay?
And, and that's fair, because if you grant the setback variance, then all of a sudden he does want to build a three-story house...
Once that's, once that variance is...
I got it, I got it.
You know?
No, he's gonna build the house that we gave you a picture. Yep.
Any other questions for Mr. Lynch? Anyone else here speaking in favor of this application? If you're speaking in favor, please come forward.
Hi, I'm Mark Chazwinski, 147 Westfield Road. My property abuts the southern edge of this proposal. I'm in favor of the application, the way Attorney Lynch described it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please come forward.
Afternoon, everyone.
My name is James Loma, this is my wife, Ria. We have lived in Milford for 22 years. We love Milford. My house and lot is actually next to the home, and our...
Sir, I'm sorry, could you please give your address?
17 Raycroft Street.
Thank you.
Which is right next to the proposed house of Mr. Lynch. But our support is conditional that it will be only a two-story house. He, he came, the builder came over to our house on Saturday and showed us pictures of a two-story home that he's planning to build, and...
If he gets the variance.
If he gets the variance. And another picture if he doesn't, which is a three-story, very vertical house, which is really not out of, very out of character of the neighborhood. I'm sorry, we haven't seen the plan that they sent to Milford. We got the letter just Monday, and we both worked, so we, we didn't see the exact plan.
Are you, are you in favor of the application?
Conditional that it's gonna be a two-story home.
Okay. Did you see the pictures of the proposed house?
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you. You're all set, then? That's not the, that's not the actual picture, that's...
That's a three-story.
Yeah, that's, that's what would have been built if, without a variance, yes. So that is not the exact house, that's what it would be kind of like.
Okay.
So, your, your concern was that it wouldn't be higher? Okay, all right. But otherwise, you're in favor?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
He builds those.
Okay, we'll note that, probably. Anyone else speaking in favor?
Beverly Sharlin, 42 Raycroft Street. I'm in favor of the house, as long as it's a colonial and it's only two stories.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, can you pull the mic closer to you and, and speak directly into it with your name and address again?
Beverly Sharlin, 42 Raycroft Street.
Thank you.
And I am in favor in supporting my neighbors in a colonial and only two stories. Other than that, the neighbors would be more than happy to see that home there. But as long as it's similar, he brought a picture, but we want it in writing that this is what it is gonna be.
Thank you.
Ma'am, we'd put a, we'd put a restriction on there, the height restriction, if we give him the variance.
Okay.
Anyone else speaking in favor?
My name is Lucis Media. I live at 24 Raycroft Street, across the street. Just wanted to let you know that I am in favor of the variance. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Magna Patel. I'm the owner of 25 Raycroft Street. We are in favor of building the house as proposed with two stories and not three stories. We should be good.
Yes, we're all good, thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Okay, so we have no opposition. Everyone here is in favor. Okay, any other closing comments, Mr. Lynch? You're all set?
All set.
Okay, the hearing's closed. Okay. Well, we have no opposition...
I have no problem with as long as we put the height restriction in there.
Yeah, so whoever makes the motion, put that restriction in there.
We ready for a motion?
Yeah, go ahead.
I make a motion to approve the two-story height, house with a height restriction of 27 feet to midspan. Does that sound good? I think that's what we did on the last one.
Do we, do we need an actual number?
Okay.
Do we need an actual number?
Two, two living stories, two stories...
I think an actual number would, would be much more precise.
Let's go 27 feet, because if you take off 35, take off a floor, say eight feet, so we're at, we're actually at, um...
27.
27. Okay, 27 to midspan.
Second.
We have a motion with conditions, right? And we have a second on the motion. Mr. Hirsch?
With the motion.
Mr. Sodha?
With the motion.
Mr. Wolf?
With the motion.
Mr. DuBois?
With the motion.
I'm, I'm with the motion.
So do we have any new business? Do we have any new business? Or should I say old business? The staff update, what are we doing?
Yes, we have a staff update. Last month, there was a discussion about, there was a discussion about motions and so forth, and I erroneously said that someone who makes a motion cannot vote against their own motion. That was a mistake. Anybody can vote against their own motion. So in other words, if someone makes a motion to approve, they can then turn around and vote to deny, or vote against their own motion.
That just sounds weird, but I guess if you can...
If there's gonna be any more, let's close this meeting, and then if we have any more questions, we can talk about it, so. Acceptance of the minute from June 8th. Everyone look through the minutes, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
opposed? No? All right. Motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
This meeting's adjourned.